My name is Don Michaelman, and I'd like to have my fellow commissioners introduce himself before we start the meeting here. Susan, you want to start?
Good morning. I'm Susan Graham, and it's great to see you all here.
Good morning, Tom Davis.
Good morning, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Jim Whiting.
Joe, you don't have to introduce yourself. Before we start, if you would check your phones to make sure they're either turned off or on silent, would appreciate that. This is the welcome you to the January 30th, 2025, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission on that. This is an open public hearing and is being videotaped by the city. Proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commissioners present is five. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Also, would like to have the commission members mention their name when they talk too because it's going to be a little more difficult understanding who's who here, okay? First item on the agenda is the approval of the January 9th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no correction, is there a motion?
So moved.
Tom Riley's moved?
Tom Riley.
Sorry.
That's right, supposed to say it.
Jim Whiting, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Jacob?
Commissioner Whiting?
I was absent that meeting, so I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Commissioner Graham?
Approved.
Commissioner Davis?
Approved.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approved.
Chair Michaelman?
Approved. Next item is presentation and discussion and approval regarding the future land use map in the general plan update. Tammy?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner, Chairman, members of the commission, Tammy DeWitt, community planner. Thank you for working with us today for the public. So they know the reason why we're having this meeting in this room today is because per state law for general plans as we're re-adopting it or updating it, we do have to have two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, which this is our second one of for public hearings, and they have to be at separate locations. So thank you for everyone for working with us, and we think this is going to go pretty smoothly today. So for housekeeping, if anyone needs it, the restrooms are in the back up the stairs to the left. So, okay. So we brought this forward to you again. This, this map has been discussed many times by the General, General Plan Committee. For Planning and Zoning Commission, this is our most, probably most important thing that we look at for zoning purposes. So as rezoning cases come before us, we look at this map. Is it in compliance with the future land use map? And then we have triggers that say whether it be a minor plan amendment and a major plan amendment, which is in the document itself, which we'll go over later after the next item. So, but we were asked to bring this forward. There's been some, there were some changes we made kind of at the last minute. So we were brought before us, we had some areas on the map that were designated as open space, which was a violation of state law. So per ARS 946106 regarding land use map, basically what it says is that we cannot designate anybody's property, private property or state land as open space, and we cannot designate it for anything other than one dwelling unit or more per acre. So it came to our attention before that we had some areas that were probably mislabeled, and so we fixed it, but then there's still some question about, about the land use map and the different designations. So this is our current, current, sorry, current future use land use map. So we have commercial, commercial employment, and as a reminder, this is not zoning. So this is a totally different map than, well, it kind of matches our zoning map, but it is a, it's not a zoning map. So this is land use designations, which is spelled out on page 66 in the general plan, which is an explanation of the different land use destinations. I might have to throw that out. So we have commercial, commercial employment, low to medium density, which is one to seven dwelling units per acre, medium to high density, which is eight to 32, mixed use, open space, and recreation. So what we did would be four, we had a designation that was very low density, but the way we had it was less than one dwelling unit per acre. So that was a violation of state law. So as staff, we kind of looked at the map. So what we did was we just got rid of the very low density and just changed those all to the low to medium density for one to seven dwelling units per acre. And then we've gotten some questions about that, you know, maybe we can bring back the very low density residential and just have it as one dwelling unit per acre or one to two or whatever this body decides to designate it as. Very low density was actually defined in the general plan under the land use designations as the very low density residential category is intended for large lot, single-family housing in rural, in a rural setting. Development in these areas will consist mainly of detached single-family homes on two-acre lots or larger. The basic character of development is rural. So at the time when this was, it was mostly the ranchland up north, behind us. Great place to be talking about this. So the area we are looking at is the North Prescott area. That is our growth area. That's where we see growth possibly happening, happening besides infill development down in the other areas of town. But this area is also checkerboarded with state land and Deepwell Ranch, ranchland. And so, and these are the two biggest landowners within the city of Prescott or adjacent to the city of Prescott. So this is the area we're kind of looking at. If we look along Williamson Valley Road, which is all out in this, in the county, you know, some of it is 35,000, which is point eight six acres, so one dwelling unit per acre. Some of these are R1L 70, which is 1.65 acres, and I think there's some two acres up in here. This area in the county is zoned RCU 2A. RCU is a holding zone in the county for either to be developed under the two-acre zoning or for future plans to come in and rezone it. So this is the area we're really looking at is around the airport in the north area. There are some other areas in town we would look at if we change it to bring back the very low density, and we'll look at whether this would apply to that, too. So the comments, you did receive that from the State Land Department. They were concerned. You know, they are landholders within the state. They have beneficiaries that they have to make sure that their properties, they're vested and that they have adequate land uses associated. And they've been very active this, these last few years with general plans around, around the state to make sure that their property rights are maintained. So this was in your packet. You know, they don't consent to anything less than one dwelling unit per acre, basically is what it says. And they like agree that the low to medium density designation was acceptable. And you also did get a letter from Deepwell Ranch that was sent to you this week that was basically saying the same thing, that, you know, they don't consent to anything less than one dwelling unit per acre, and that they agreed that the low to medium density designation was acceptable and what they would like to see it maintained. So our question before you today is should we bring back the very low density designation and whether one dwelling unit or one to two dwelling units or what you feel might be appropriate for those areas? And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Personally, I favor having the low density being one dwelling per acre, and then the next one being two to seven dwellings per acre. But that's my personal thoughts. Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, Tom Davis, I think I mentioned, I think to, and my email to Tammy earlier this week was that I agree kind of with the same interpretation. I think allowing one unit to the acre and moving to two to seven. I mean, we see these categories, and they're in my, my mind, they are treated like up two, up to seven to the acre, up to 32 to the acre, et cetera. And that allows for some interpretation through the zoning process. So I have no qualm about just putting in a designation of, of, you know, one to the acre and then going from two to seven. I think that's, that's a proper solution.
Any other comments?
Jim Whiting, with, I don't disagree with what you were saying, Tom, but isn't that supposed to be not less than one per acre? Or is it just up two?
We would just have one dwelling unit per acre.
Okay. That'd be your max.
No, I understand that would be the, that would be the, well, I don't remember exactly how you quoted it, but it sounded like it was left some question mark. Sorry.
Well, that's my intent, that that would, that's, that would be the max. It's like the other categories. Like I said, low, medium is seven to the acre. High, medium high is 32 to the acre. That's the max. Max would be one to the acre.
Okay.
In that category.
Thank you.
I have a question. If that was going to be something that we looked at, Tom Riley, if that, if that's going to be something that we looked at, how does the land use map change?
So if we look at the North Prescott area, a lot of this would be changed to possibly very low density, one dwelling unit per acre. And then to the left, I mean, to the right of the airport area over in this area would be the same. We would change that also to very low density. And then there's some areas south of that state trust land that's used for, I think the Turkey Trail goes through there, and there's a wash that would also be designated as very low density.
So all the pale yellow would change from one to seven dwelling units per acre down to one dwelling unit per acre if you did what you were saying?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, that's.
Most of this is two acre in the county, already developed, two acres. Like I said, these are, I think this is, was two acre. There is some R1L 70, which is 1.65. This, I think it was 35,000 density in the county, which is one dwelling unit per acre. But then we have this mixed use here. So we have this transition area between this low density here and then the mixed use here of higher density, mixed use of Deepwell Ranch. And this is state trust land that they asked for that to be mixed use to be consistent with the adjacent area.
So the area directly, Tom Riley's still, the area directly below where your arrow is right now, what is that?
Those are, that's Pinion Oaks. How big are those? Eighteen density, 18,000 square foot lot. So that would be.
Half acre.
Three, four dwelling units per acre. And this is the new subdivision coming in under the same type zoning.
So that color is not correct, then? Given, if it stays the, the way that is designated right now, which is one to seven dwelling units per acre, the color is correct. If it changes, then that's, the land use map has to change along with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have to change this land use map if we add that density designation.
I don't know, seems like a pretty broad brush to me. I'm not in favor of doing that.
And we do have representatives that are here to speak on this, too.
I bet.
Yeah, this is a city boundary. We went and changed these because they're already under entitlements, so we can't change that. So it would be anything over this red, which is the city boundary line. So this is all out in the county right now. So this would be annexed, come in probably under a development agreement with other provisions in place, more than likely.
Tom Riley's still, now, if that is, all the things that have the designation in there, the pale yellow, that's not within the corporate limits of the city, correct?
Correct. It's for future projects coming forward.
Okay, so for future projects coming forward, when that land comes in, which is currently zoned RU2L?
RCU 2A.
RC, oh, two acre?
Mm-hmm.
It has to come in as two acre?
It will.
And so then the city would have the opportunity to change that zoning. They have to bring it into two acre zoning, which is very low density. And then the city would have to go through a zoning change process in order to be able to make whatever designation the landowners want in that particular area. Is that correct?
Correct.
So regardless of, the only thing, reason we're doing this is that if we keep it the zoning that it is, if we keep it the designation that it is now, land outside the city, then when they bring it in, there's an opportunity of not having to go through a major plan amendment to have to change the zoning. I mean, that's basically it, right?
Correct.
So that's, it comes in, it comes in at two acre, and then they have to change, somebody would have to change the zoning in order to be able to create some other kind of zoning. And the only issue that we have here then is whether or not we're going to make them go through a general plan, major amendment or a minor amendment.
Correct.
So the process really isn't much different, is it? No matter what we do with this land, that process isn't going to change a whole bunch.
No, I mean, if it comes, if we have it, keep it as it is under one to seven dwelling units. If they come in under, with seven dwelling units per acre, it's allowed, the rezoning request is that. Then it matches the land use map. There's no change, no general plan amendment.
Okay, so if you could, for Tammy, just for purposes of the audience and everybody else, if you could tell us what the difference is, what, what is a major plan amendment cause to happen as opposed to just a minor plan amendment?
Sure. So with a major plan amendment, the additional requirements besides just our basic rezoning process is it has a 60-day public comment period, and then it needs a supermajority vote from city council.
Whereas a minor plan amendment is done administratively?
It runs with the rezoning request, but it doesn't require the 60-day public comment period or the supermajority vote by city council.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? You need a motion from us, don't you?
We have members of the public who wish to speak on this item.
You gotta let the public speak, Don. Sorry.
First speaker will be Jenna James.
Good morning. Jenna James, representing Deepwell Ranch. This is new, a little bit new to us, the proposal that the ultra-low density designation be brought back into the general plan. At, in the original draft, we weren't opposed to the city keeping the ultra-low density. We were just opposed to being included in that designation because it was a violation of state law. Not necessarily opposed to today's proposal. There is another provision of state law that does govern general plans. That is, I can look that up, it's 9461.05, and that says that similarly situated parcels cannot be, have different land use designations. So as long as all of the parcels in this general area that are either state land or privately owned are in that same category of one dwelling unit per acre, we're not opposed. However, if you're going to say, well, this one is owned by someone else, and there, it's not going to be one dwelling unit per acre, then we are opposed to that because that's a violation of state law. You can't use ownership as a reason to have different land use designations. They need to be geographically or otherwise substantially different in order to have a different land use designation. And we don't believe that the other parcels similarly situated around the airport are substantially different enough for them to receive a differently used designation. I am welcome, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Appears no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Polk.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Stephen Polk, 125 North Granite Street, Prescott, Arizona, Boyle Petridge Law Firm, attorney for Deepwell Ranch. I'll try not to repeat what Jenna said or Mr. DeWitt. Those were really nicely presented. So just want to summarize. The first one is, I think Tammy correctly presented today, the state law says minimum of one dwelling unit per acre. So if you do that, then you're complying with ARS 9-461.06. So that's, the minimum is one. But I do want to talk a little bit about, just from, this is a future land use map, and so you're trying to plan for the future here, and, and you want to consider this in the context of the entirety of, of the general plan, and that we talk about things like water conservation and future growth, and how do we plan for that growth? And responsible growth allows for higher density than this minimum of one dwelling unit per acre. So to recap, when the general plan committee went through this initially over on the east side and properties near the airport, they had that at that two to seven dwelling unit per acre. I think that, you know, properly allowed for a little bit more future land use growth. And then Deepwell Ranch itself was really just targeted only as this ultra-low density. And so I really do think you should consider that in terms of the more responsible thing is allowing, or at least planning to allow for, for future density if growth does occur there. You know, when you talk about a one, one dwelling unit per acre at that point financially, you're talking about putting your own well on the property, doing your own septic on the property. So from a water conservation, that does, that's kind of the least responsible way to do development. The kind of, the better cluster development where you have sewer infrastructure and you can get the recharges is really the more responsible way. So I do want to encourage you to think about the whole picture of the general plan when thinking about what this future land use map talks about. And then I want to return to Commissioner Riley's point, which is, again, this is not, you're not making a zoning decision today. This property is in the county, and it's RCU 2A. That's the agricultural designation right now. If and when it were to get annexed into the city, it comes in with that. It's called a zoning equivalency. So state law says it has a zoning equivalency, so state law says it has to come in at the same zoning it is in the county. So it comes into city of Prescott, also has two acre minimum residential lot sizes, then we would have to go through the normal rezoning process, where you get public outreach, public comment, planning and zoning commission gets to hear on it and make a decision then. And so really, the key difference in why we're talking about the future land use map is, if you pick this one dwelling unit per acre as the future, that does trigger, that'll trigger a requirement to do a, this, a major amendment to the general plan. And again, that would require super majority, so, really, I think, we shouldn't be tying our hands on that and, and plan for the future. So that's, allowing that slightly higher density like the, like the original map had on the east side of the airport, the Arizona Eco Development Properties. So I'd encourage you, when you look at the map right in front of you here with all yellow, that makes sense. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at that, the prior version that had really just targeted just the Deepwell Ranch property and state land property for the one acre minimums, then it, you can see, it looks a bit arbitrary. There's no real significant difference, and so we're asking, don't discriminate against Deepwell Ranch on the basis of, just because we own the property in the middle and it's easy to target us. So certainly, two things today I want to conclude with, we want to be treated the same as the other undeveloped land out there. And number two, really take a look at, I think the two to seven dwelling units per acre is, for purposes of future land use map, and within the whole context of the general plan, I think that's really the better designation. I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I mean, so let's say we keep it as staff recommended, and it's two, you know, one to seven to the acre in that category, that establishes for the city a land use policy for this entire area of a maximum of seven to the acre. Wouldn't that be in your best interest to keep that seven to the acre category versus a one or two?
Absolutely, Commissioner Davis, yeah, so the one to seven gives that greater flexibility, and again, it's the future plan, right? It wouldn't preclude us from doing lower density if we want to develop that way in the future, but it's certainly in our best interest and the interest of North Prescott to allow for that future growth, to go with that one to seven.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ralph Hess.
Good morning, my name's Ralph Hess, I live in Prescott. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, I disagree with the interpretation of the statute that's been presented by council and staff. In your packet, you have my long dissertation of my rationale for why I disagree with that Once, once you decide that you're not going to designate private property or state land trust as open space, my interpretation is statute does not require you to have at least one dwelling unit per acre. So, but, I'm not going to rehash all that, you have my rationale on that. My point is, I would prefer that you end up making decisions regarding the land use map based on planning decisions rather than misinterpretation of that statute. And it sounds like you're going to put in the very low density designation with a minor change, so I support that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more speakers.
Okay. Discussion. Tom?
I don't know why we would change what staff has recommended. I'm not seeing a rationale for doing that. And I think from a plant, you know, that, that a professional planner is number one. So, you know, I think that they probably know a little bit more than maybe most of us do about planning things, and that's their recommendation. I, for one, would like to see us go with the designation of the one to seven dwelling units per acre, low, low density, one to seven dwelling units per acre as recommended by the staff. And the reason for that is that it allows, as Mr. Polk pointed out, it allows us to, it allows staff to take a look at the developments as an, on an individual basis. And it allows them to take a look at the use, utilization of water, sewer, and different things, different things coming in, and we, we don't necessarily have to put that into a, into a major plan amendment. So good planning shouldn't have to go through all that big process that we're going to go through with the major plan amendment. So I, for one, would like to see us move forward with the more, in my opinion, the more versatile solution, which is the one that staff is putting forward.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll, I see your point about the process of the general plan amendment, which I, I'm not, this is Tom Davis, sorry. I agree with you about the process of the general plan amendment, it may be owners. However, when I see that area designated up to seven units to the acre, that's giving a, essentially some entitlement of growth to that extent, which may be detrimental to the infrastructure, future infrastructure of the, of the city. So my point is that, giving, giving areas that are outside the city that are possibly being annexed to the city, I'm concerned about the infrastructure supporting up to seven units to the acre in any, any form. So my concern is that we do the best we can to limit that area until a planning development proposal comes in that we can evaluate objectively.
And Tom Riley, and you're right about that, I understand where you're coming from on that. One of the issues comes in though is that, when it comes in, it comes in as very, very, very low density. It comes in at two acres for one dwelling unit. Now, from that point, the landowner, no matter who they are, has to be able, they need to come in and they need to design the plat that they want, and they need to bring it forward, and it has to go through the zoning process, has to go through the zoning changes as it is right now. So I guess the question comes in is, are we going to say that if they come in with anything more than one dwelling unit per acre, if they want to do something more than one dwelling unit per acre, are we going to put them through the hoops of having to go through a general plan amendment? And I think that that's silly. I mean, they have to go through the process, and it's a public process, they have to go through the process anyway.
Tammy.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, this, another thing that this map is used for is for future planning. So as the Water Resources Department is doing their future land use planning for their long-range water management plan, they're going to use this map to help create that. So if they have it show that it's up to seven dwelling units per acre, they can kind of plan future, you know, allocations based on that. So that's why when we extended our boundaries a little bit from before, so that Stringfield, in the future, if they wanted to be annexed, it's in our boundary this time, unlike last time. But then we went out to where we see where Chino Valley's come down to Outer Loop Road, we hit that boundary, we're hit on the right side, on the east side, we're hit by Prescott Valley, we can't grow that way anymore. We can't grow to the west anymore, you got county, then you have forest. To the south, there's a couple of large parcels down there, but most of it's been developed and you hit Forest Service. So the north is where we're planning for, our future planning. And the water allocation, the regional water management plan, we'll look at this map and look at the density that we have kind of planned for that area, and then they're going to plan according to that. And that might help with, with your, your comments about the future planning in infrastructure, because we are going to plan our infrastructure going northward.
So, again, Tammy, thank you. Some of my previous written comments regarding water relate to this. And so, my point is that, this establishes land use policy for the city, and zoning implements that land use policy. And my, my concern is that we have a huge swath of land that's presently very low density right now, and we're going to allow up to seven, and let's see what happens. So I'm still concerned about the aspect of just, you know, if we had another category, one to three, or whatever the case may be, I'd be a little more comfortable.
And that's, that's something you do, if you want to bring back the very low density, you can have it one, one to three, whatever you think, and then the other one will be, you know, four to seven, or whatever.
I'm just still concerned about establishing, basically, what we're doing here is we're establishing an up to, almost like an entitlement to seven dwelling units per acre for this area.
But this is not zoning, remember, this is not zoning.
I know it's not zoning, but it establishes land use policy that zoning can implement, right? It's not the other way around. Zoning doesn't govern the land use, long-range land use policy of the city, the general plan does. And that's my concern.
So, Tom Riley, Mr. Davis, you, it sounds like what you're saying is that up to seven units, if they were to develop that up to seven units, there's just too many people. Is that correct?
Well, I'm just saying that we probably don't have the, the information, or, we don't have the infrastructure or the information right now that...
What do you mean by infrastructure?
Infrastructure, the stuff that we depend upon.
Roadways, sewer lines, water lines.
Water access, yeah.
Well, as the developer, no matter what they do, no matter what the density, the developer is required to put those in anyway. There are, that's, that's, that's the way our code works.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you, but we're establishing a land, long-term land use policy up to seven to the acre, that's...
And so you think that this just, that just allows us to have too many people up there?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the justification moving that property, that, if, if, if that was already subdivided, plats were already approved by the county, be a different story, but, I, it's, to me, it's just an extremely broad brush. And if I was the landowner on the other side, I'd be very happy with what we're doing, with up to seven the acre for all that great open space. I'd be very happy.
So if we, if we designate that for less population up there, less people being in that area, which is the crux of your concern, then at that point, the planning, whatever, not just planning staff here, but water resources and everything else, and public works, all the, they start planning for the lower density.
If the capacity there, infrastructure supports it, a general plan amendment for that area is appropriate.
Again, you and I are probably not going to agree on this, but I don't see where, when you use the word infrastructure, you're talking about all the things that the developer's required to do, whether it's one dwelling unit per acre or 50 dwelling units per acre.
Correct.
So the infrastructure is not, is not there now because it's vacant land. But if you're not going to make it vacant land, then they're required to do all that work. So I guess, you know, vacant land, yes, of course, there's no infrastructure out there right now.
Right.
But to base your decision on what's not there, just, it just seems to me to be somewhat myopic.
I think, I think we're basically saying maybe the same thing, but I'm saying the opposite. I'd rather see, I'd rather see a better justification before we give a carte blanche to that high of a density for this area.
Again, you don't want too many people out there.
That's your interpretation.
Tammy, I have a couple of questions for you. You had mentioned that there would be a review, I think by state water, on, based on what we're looking at here, that if we had like up to seven units per acre, they would take that into effect on water in the future?
Yes, Chairman. So, and the city of Prescott started to do our long-range water management plan, which is a strategy and a goal in the general plan. So what they are looking at, what they use, they use our future land use map to help plan for the growth areas inappropriate for what may be coming in, in that area. We understand that adjacent to the existing Deepwell Ranch, we're going to have master plans that come in, or they're going to incorporate into the Deepwell Ranch master plan and be a higher density and probably a mixed use. That's more than likely what's going to happen from a planning perspective, probably past 10 years, you know? I mean, first we had to see, hopefully, Deepwell Ranch get built out first before we see that, but it could happen at any time. We don't know what's going to happen, we don't, our crystal balls aren't working. But we want to make sure we're planning appropriately, and when we do look at future land uses, all our departments are going to be looking at that as we start looking at this area and see, as things start happening out there. But the water management plan, they are going to look at our future land use map, where we kind of see maybe where our boundaries can go, and plan appropriate and make sure that we're planning appropriately for those areas.
What kind of effect would it be on the water use plan if we had one to seven versus one, in your opinion?
That's a fluid subject. Um...
Oh, bad pun.
You know, that's, that's a difficult, you know, right now, we're waiting for a decision in order from the state, we don't know when we're going to get that, to help answer your question that you had before. There's, we have no, no idea when they're, the state's going to say, your decision in order, and this is what you're allocated in the future. We have no idea. There's so many water, if you look at the legislation this year and every year, there, water's a huge concern in the state. And so it's being looked at very heavily by the state and the, and the AMAs, whether they're acting appropriately or not, or allocated appropriately, or what we're doing up here to comply with AMA requirements. So we just want to make sure we're addressing it, so in the future, in the next 10 years, if we see growth happen out here, we don't know what's going to happen, anything can happen, we can have another disaster somewhere else and people start flooding over here. I'm not saying, I don't encourage that, but, but we want to make sure we're planning appropriately for this area. This is our growth area, North Prescott, we know that. We don't know when it's going to happen, but we just want to make sure that we have everything in our toolbox that we can plan appropriately. And if you have it at one dwelling unit per acre, that's what we're going to plan for, even though in the back of our minds, we kind of know it's going to be higher, but we don't have any idea what it would come in as. At least with seven dwelling units, it could allow us, could allow us to plan more appropriately.
When a property owner wants to have their land brought into the city, whether it's one or one to seven, they're going to have to present what their plans are, and that will come in front of planning and zoning, city council and so forth, correct?
Correct. So when we annex the property, we bring it in, and we have, per state law, we have to designate it under a similar zoning. So that's RCU2A out in the county, so we would come in, it would come in under RE2A. Ninety percent of the time, we're going to see a master plan. Out here, we're going to see a master plan, we're going to have development agreements, what they're going to have to do for infrastructure for that area and so forth. Then they're going to present a zoning map change. Usually the zoning map changes go with the annexations, that's usually how we process those. So you're going to see the master plan, the vision for that area, and make sure that it's all appropriate for that area as part of a rezoning request. The question's going to be, is it going to be a minor plan amendment or a major plan amendment? And we have those triggers, our new chart that we created that's in the master plan, of what triggers a major or minor plan amendment from that category.
Now, our general plan's going to be for the next 10 years. The chances of this property we're looking at, most of it, is not going to be developed in the next 10 years. Part of it probably could, but the majority of it is not. That's my guess of it. Am I wrong, or possible, or what?
My, you know, like I said, we don't know what can happen, there could be a, anything can happen, you know? But, I mean, I'm guessing that too, but, like I said, my crystal ball's not working for next 10 years.
Okay. Any other questions for Tammy while she's up here? Jim Whiting. I, I agree that the city should plan for a worst-case scenario, because especially as it relates to the water, since that is probably the biggest question mark of development. Because without the water, you're not going to get the development, so if the state is part of that planning process, I think they should be dealing with the highest possibility.
part of that planning process, I think they should be dealing with the highest possibility in order to put us, you know, in a position to really know what to do when those projects come up.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, is...
Hey, Don.
Yes?
Terry Sappio, resident Prescott. I didn't feel out of form. What this really boils down to, and we went round and round and round with this in the General Plan Committee, and the chairman of the General Plan Committee, is how onerous do you want to make development in the city of Prescott, and whether something should be a major plan amendment or a minor plan amendment? If you trigger the major plan amendment, and the, the one acre designation would essentially trigger the major plan amendment every time somebody wants to rezone, it requires a supermajority of the city council to approve the rezoning. And we have forty-eight thousand residents that vote for the seven members of the city council, including the mayor, and when you start requiring supermajorities, you are swaying the vote in favor of one side or the other. And by requiring a supermajority, you are swaying the vote in favor of the no voters. And I think everybody in the city has voted for the seven members of the city council, and they all deserve equal say. But when you require a supermajority vote, you are giving a greater-than-equal say to the no voters, because you have to have a supermajority of the yes voters to say, to approve the rezoning, but you only need a minority of the no voters to stop the rezoning. So I think in fairness, we should lean toward the one to seven instead of the one and then the two to seven, because it gives everybody a fair and equal chance of representation on the city council when they come to vote, and not swaying the vote in favor of the no voters.
Thank you, Terry. Jacob, is that it? Do we have anybody else?
No, that, that would be it.
Okay. Any further discussion, or should we work on a motion?
I have one question, and it has to do with the way that this, what we're asked to vote on is worded. It says, let's see, with or without the very low designation?
Well, I think the point is that we make a decision, are we going to include it or not include it, one way or the other. And so whoever makes the motion...
Regardless of what the number is.
Well, if we wanted, if we want to have it without the very low designation, then we make the motion as such that without, we do not include the very low-density option. If you make the motion without that, then the low-density option stays in.
If you want one to seven without, if you want one, it's with. Am I right?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No, don't make a motion. I recommend a move to approve the future land use map without the very low-density designation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Jim Whiting, second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Jacob?
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approve.
Chair Michaelman?
I want to make a comment before I vote. I like the idea of coming in at one dwelling per acre, but also see the advantage of having the one to seven for future planning and handling future annexations. So I vote yes.
There you have it. Next?
Before we get to the next item here, we're going to be dealing with the general plan. We have several members of the general plan committee in the audience. If you would raise your hand, because you all went through a lot of stuff, and I know this hurt personally to do this, and I want to thank you for your time and effort on that. Also, we have three commissioners who worked on the general plan, either part of the general plan or the total general plan. So there's some knowledge already within the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning the general plan. Tammy?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Yes, this was a very long process, and we appreciate everyone that participated. So it wasn't just the general plan committee, it was the citizens of Prescott and the staff that work for the city of Prescott. Through the whole process, we had public attending all our meetings, giving input, providing written comments, and we integrated all of that into the draft that you see today. So we never took anybody's comments out of line. We, we tried to address it as much as we can and incorporated it the best that we can to get to where we are today. So. And also, just so the public knows, this was not written by me. I did not write this plan. A lot, most of it was updated. It was updated by city staff from those departments. So when we started this process, when the general plan committee was formed, we also had a general plan review committee that consisted of city staff from every department that I met with every month, that usually was the Wednesday after our general plan committee, to let them know, this is where we are in the process, this is what I need from you. And then when we started updating, and that was all done by staff from those departments. We had representation from the fire department, from the police department, from water resources, traffic, public works, from all our departments, and they all provided input from their perspectives as the ones that will be implementing this plan. So I wanted to just kind of throw that out, that this was actually a city plan. It was written by city staff that are the ones that are planning for what we need, what we need in the future as we move forward, because we're moving forward. We don't want to go backwards. We always want to go forward. So. What is a general plan? You know, the general plan is a public document that guides future land use decisions. The zoning, rezoning, and new developments must be consistent and conform to the city's adopted general plan, which we just went over, the land use map needs to be consistent with that, or it triggers other processes. What does a general plan do? I think this is very important. It guides future decisions about growth while balancing economic development and city resources. It's a roadmap, you know, describing the destination, the path to reach, and creates goals and strategies based on the community input. You know, we had three open houses, we had surveys out there, we had other ways of getting public comment to get to this point. What does it not do? Prevent all future growth and development within the city. We can't stop that. People have private property rights, and Arizona is very, very stringent on protecting those private property rights. Change existing entitlements without further action. We can't go into existing master plans or existing entitlements and change it. Commit city resources or preempt decisions of the current or future city council, which is a concern. Compel a private property owner to develop a particular use or type of building, or influence applications that are already under review. So in our introduction, we have what is a general plan. So now we're going to get into the crux of the plan, to ask you guys what comments you have. So we have what is a general plan, we have a vision, how the plan's laid out, background for our history, existing conditions and trends about populations and demographics, and our population changes over the last ten years. Were there any questions in regard to the introduction section? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. So now we get into the meat of the document. So we create these livability goals to five different categories that all the required, and additional categories that we put in are all spread out through all this. So we have resiliency and sustainability. We thought that was very important. If anything happens, we want to make sure we're resilient, and as we grow, we might make sure we're sustainable. Those are very key, and it has various input of what those can mean. So we try to address that as best as possible. Community connected is more of the regional look at things, like circulation, digital connectivity, wildlife corridors was very big in this discussions, as well as open space. Great Places and Neighborhoods, that's where we kind of go back into the crux of our neighborhood, economic competitive and prosperity, and then community quality, which most of that, it was volunteer that we've had in the last general plans and we included in this one. So, under resiliency and sustainability, we have the land use intro, the fire department, environmental planning, water resources, and climate and energy. We did have some questions that came in for these sections. The first one, it was a member of the public that asked about the comprehensive community risk assessment was last updated in 2019. So we did reach out to the fire department and asked them, and it was in, actually in the community, the general plan, that it would be looked at and updated in late 24. We had a lot of things that happened in late 24 that, but we had already written the draft. So as we're moving forward, we're trying to update this. So, the updated risk assessment was completed in late 24 and adopted by the council in November. So we'll update the plan. There was some language that was suggested from the police chief in regards to that, and we will update that to make sure that that's up to date for the latest and greatest. Another thing was, there was no mention of the new sales prop, 478, passed in November of 2024. When we wrote this, who knew we were going to have something like this come up, you know? So, there are, there's only one thing, item, that the police chief asked us to update in regards to the, the relevant issues. That was the strategy, the seven strategic issues that's in their strategic plan. That's a lot of words. Only number five, sustainable funding, that he wanted to be updated, to change it, to address with the new sales tax. So he gave, provided some language to update it, and we'll update that as it moves forward to city council. Are there any questions about that so far? Nope. Okay. Another one was about water, you know, about build-out, which we've been talking about, you know? We don't have the decision in order from the state yet in regards of our stuff has gotten approved or what we're getting approved for. We have no idea when that comes, that's going to come forward. But the city is beginning their phase of creating a long-term water management plan that would address the water usage and management as we move forward. And then we also have the approved water policy that designates how we provide water or allocate water for new projects coming forward. So that's stuff that's already in place, and then as we get the decision orders start building up, that'll be another document for water. So, we, right now, what we have is most current information we have in regards to future water supply. There was another question that came from the public at the last meeting, but has there been no update since 2010 on water from Big Chino? No, there hasn't. It's all been in litigation. Page thirty-six did say that there would be a Big Chino groundwater flow model would be completed in late 2024. I have reached out to water resources for any updates to this section. They didn't have anything in regards to this. There was a couple other minor tweaks in it, but there has not been anything done since 2010 for the Big Chino water. They still have in studies and negotiations and lawsuits or whatever else it's in, but what we have in the plan is the most up-to-date at this point. Okay, that's, that was last for resiliency and sustainability. Were there any other questions from the commission? You guys are making this really easy on me today.
Give it time.
I'm sure. Community connected, that's transportation, planning, open space, wildlife corridors, and digital connectivity. We did receive a comment about, about transit, public transit that serves at downtown. Right now, so Prescott Valley is the only one that took advantage of any federal money for trying to create a transit. They have a microtransit that goes from Prescott Valley. It's now coming over to Prescott, and this is all overseen by Simbo. So Simbo is doing all the regional planning for a regional transit system, which is still in the process of being worked on with their long-term transportation plan. So right now, what we have in the plan is the most up-to-date in regards to transit, and it'll be future studied by Simbo and hopefully expanded to a bigger transit system, maybe, in the future.
So, so I think this is one of my comments, right?
Yes.
And so, that's Tom Davis. I think it's all great that the transportation transit system is folded into the general plan, especially on a regional basis, and it's a wonderful job. My concern is, like, we talked in other hearings before, is we've limited downtown parking. And is there a more, let's say, micro, Prescott-alone study of aiding in the transit of people to frequent downtown more often, easier, et cetera, because of the lack of parking?
That is being looked at. I did read recently, there's a new study that Simbo's doing in regards to Prescott downtown about parking, wave finding, signage, and stuff, and things like that, and probably maybe having, right now, I think there's only one transit, one microbus that's used for that, the one transit system we have. So, and they did expand it to downtown. Now, whether federal funding will ever happen or come forward that we can take more advantage of to expand that system, that's something Simbo's studying right now. It's all under separate studies.
Gotcha. But I think that's a concern for the merchants downtown and the people that frequent downtown.
And so they are doing a parking study to look at the parking capacity and such in what we have downtown, which has been needed. Okay. And that was all for community connected that I had. You know, we, we expanded wildlife corridors, gave it its own section. We know that's, that's being studied by Simbo right now on a regional level of open space connectivity, wildlife corridors, and all that, as one of their other subset studies they're doing. So, we are a participant in Simbo, the city of Prescott, so we are always involved in all those discussions. Okay. Next is Great Places and Neighborhoods, which is land use and growth areas, planning hierarchy, future land use designations and map, historic preservation, recreation, pedestrian and bicycle circulation, Dark Sky Community and Tree City USA. So the Dark Sky Community and Tree City USA, that was in our survey that was done in 2023. And a majority of the public, which was about four hundred people, participated in that, and we had it open for about a year, a majority of people supported becoming a Dark Sky community. Most people thought we were a Dark Sky community. The only thing that we don't regulate under our lighting ordinance is single-family residential. For industrial, commercial, multifamily, they are required to be Dark Sky compliant in regards to their lighting, all downlit, any LEDs. There was a certain temperature of lighting that we allow. The only thing that's not regulated is single-family residential. And that's something that, if it's moved forward, which we've had tourism come to us about doing this and other community groups to help us, that would have to go through a code amendment to our land development code and go through a public hearing process, and then a lot of outreach to the community of what we need to do. We also would work with the Dark Sky Association to, about what areas we should kind of look at, and they give recommendations for certain areas as they come visit your community. Tree City USA was another one that came up, and people were pretty favorable. It was a majority of people supported becoming a tree city. And like I said at other meetings, we have a tree person on public works staff who's looking into this, and they said that they're moving forward with coming that designation. So that's something that's already in the process. In regards to funding for it, that'll be all in the public works, under their budget, but in my understanding, the last I talked to him, that they didn't, they didn't have any concerns in moving forward with that. So there's just a couple of things they'd have to do, but, but that goes through a different department and through a different process. The comment we got was about transition areas, which we got the land use map that had it, you know, transition and uses that exist today, low-density residential to highway commercial. We do have provisions in our land development code. We do have provisions in our land development code, because you know, remember the, the general plan is the 30,000-foot view of the city. Then we have other plans, like the commercial corridor overlay district, which that's the one that, that's already in our, in our land development code that gives additional criteria. So, when we have commercial next to residential, we already have criteria in place that they have to provide additional buffers, additional setbacks, and things like that. We already have that in place that we looked at as projects come through, mostly when in our commercial corridor districts. So, we already have things in place to look at that transition between commercial and residential that we implement as projects come forward.
I, I think, this is Tom Davis again. I, I, that's a very good point, and I, I know in the land development code, when we view rezonings, one of the, one of the criteria in a rezoning is the compatibility with the neighborhood issue, and I'm not sure that's, you know, to this body collectively, including me, if that's really at the forefront of some of these decisions we're making, and I just thought, should there be some kind of mention of that in a broader tent of how we deal with transitions? The last Marina project was an interesting case in that regard. We have situations, kind of our, we've, we've inherited in a way as the city of where we have like very high density next to very low-density residential and that type of stuff. And so, is that important? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's to the rest of the Commission, is that important, but it seems to me like we, we have some islands, for lack of a better term, in, in the, in the, in the land use plan that's, that's proposed, that could create issues for, for either landowner, either the landowner who is the applicant, or the landowner who is adjacent. And so, I'm just raising that issue. Is that important to us? Should it be mentioned, you know, as, as a policy issue, or just let's leave it in the land development code, which I'm happy with, and we can deal with it at that time? But, that's an issue I think that we all have to recognize is going to be down the road.
And if we see an area that in town that's going through a lot of redevelopment, we do have specific area plans, and we have neighborhood plans for certain areas that we do look at, most of them are outdated. They're like 20 years old. A little outdated for Prescott. And we, after this process is all done and said, that's our next step. We're going to be looking at our commercial corridors. We're going to be looking at our neighborhood plans, what needs to be updated, which ones are out of date and that we need to get rid of, and which ones need to be updated for what's, what we see now, the current trends in the growth in that area, or possible trends we're seeing in certain areas, I guess, if we want to kind of say. But that would be looked at at more micro scale, and then each of the projects as they come forward are looked at on a case-by-case basis, because that's when we see, does it, is it compatible, is it not compatible?
Right. Right.
Any other questions about that? Okay. And that was all for Great Places and Neighborhoods. Is there any other questions or comments about that chapter? Okay. Deepwater Ranch Master Plan. There was a question. So, that's more, okay, general plan, 30,000-foot view. Deepwater Ranch Master Plan is the boots-on-the-ground. So, whatever we approve in here doesn't affect that master plan, it can't. So, that's already in place. So, that's, that's a separate document that we look at as projects come through. So, with that one, we say, yes, it's in compliance with the Deepwater Ranch Master Plan, or no, it's not. If it wasn't, we wouldn't be bringing it forward. But usually, projects, which is mostly subdivisions that you see, we say, yes, it's in compliance with the Deepwater Ranch Master Plan, based on that plan and what we get from that, the administrator.
Okay.
That's more the, more micro look at it.
Yeah. It's, it's, but it's an exhibit in the, the general plan.
Yeah, that's for regional connectivity. So, where the map from Deepwater Ranch Master Plan is, it's under Community Connected with a circulation. So, Deepwater Ranch Master Plan, that was a regional connector. It's creating a regional connector. Same with Deepwater, I mean, Granite Dells and then AED, those are all creating regional connectors. That, that's why it was in that portion of the plan. Nope. Okay. Economic Competitive and Prosperity, land use, economic development, tourism, sustaining a business-friendly environment, ensuring a strong tax base, quality jobs, growth and cost of development, workforce housing, and our regional airports. I had no questions that came in about this. Is there anything anybody would like to say about this chapter? Any comments, questions? It's going way faster than I thought. Okay. So, Community Quality was mostly voluntary sections that were not required by Arizona Vice Statutes, but some of them are, if we hit 50,000, would be required to come in if it was, if we hit 50,000. So, we, we're looking ahead. But our Police Department is very important, just like our Fire Department. We do have a school district here, we still have kids here. The library is very important, and in fact, when, at the end of this process, we had a new library director come in, and she, her first week, we're like, here's the general plan section on library. Do you have any input? So, and she gave lots of input and kind of rewrote it for what her vision was. We, the community center, we have information of that, because that is very important in our community. We have youth programs, because like I said, we do still have youth here. Art, culture, events, museums, that is a big part of Prescott. We have a lot of art and culture, we have our museums, because part of Plan Prescott is planning the future, preserving the past. So, we want to make sure that we always showcase that. And healthcare, you know, we don't have any goals or strategies in regards to healthcare because it's not under our purview, you know? That's kind of market-driven. But, we understand there is a, a issue with healthcare, and we did try to make sure that's in our general plan, that that's something that needs to be addressed. Are there any questions about any of that? Okay. Next, major plan amendments, since, since you did not change the map, this stays the same. So, when we created, so if you look at the last general plan, and what triggers a major plan amendment, we never saw a major plan amendment in the city of Prescott. It was pretty broad. It required large areas and adjacent to very developed areas. But since all our annexations and such came in in the outside outskirts areas as we're growing, it never triggered it. So, in working with the General Plan Committee and with public input, some people brought us some ideas of things to look at. And so, we took those ideas, and we looked at, we had a map of all the vacant parcels in the city of Prescott, and their acreages, to kind of see, what do we have still available? How will changes, what can it possibly change to? How will it impact the existing neighborhoods? So, we created this chart. These are all our land use designations, open space recreation, low to medium density, medium to high density, mixed-use, commercial, commercial employment. So, if you're downzoning, it's just a minor amendment that runs with your rezoning case if you're, which we really don't see that happening, but, but if you're increasing the density or doing a major change, we have acreages that trigger those, and that, this was very highly discussed in our General Plan Committee meeting, and this is what we ended up with. So, any change from an area that's designated as open space or recreation would be a major plan amendment. We want to protect our open space and what's designated as recreation. And then if you go to low to medium density, 10 or 20 acres, depending on what it was they were changing it to, you know, and how it could impact areas for areas that we have vacant, and then so forth. But this was very highly discussed with our General Plan Committee, and this is what we came up with, and that everyone agreed to. So, are there any questions in regards to this chart?
This is Tom Davis. I, I thought it was an excellent solution, the way, way you did this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And then implementation, this is still work in progress until we get a draft with all the goals and strategies, but this is something, we're creating a spreadsheet so we can keep track of it. You know, that's something that wasn't done before. It was talked about, but no one, no one did it. So, we'll have all the goals and strategies, who's responsible, like if it's Public Works with council funding, or whatever we require. Timeline is, is it a short-term, is it a midterm door, midterm goal, or a long-term goal, and when it's completed, or even when it started? We have a lot of goals and strategies that are in the general plan that are already been, are already in the works, so we can add those. Hey, start it. So, this is something that's still work in progress, and most general plans, when you see they have the implementation, it's a work in progress at the end, even the ones that have been adopted. So, we'll, we keep working on this as we keep updating the plan. And that's all I have for you today. Are there any questions?
Questions for Tammy? Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Jacob, do we have anybody from the audience who wants to speak?
Yes, we have quite a few. First speaker is Robert Shigog.
Robert Shigog, I live at 3040 Pine Drive. I've been a resident of Prescott since 2000. I'm speaking in favor of the nondiscrimination language. Everybody's hometown. One of the key words here in this phrase is home. Home means that all residents feel safe and protected. In a good home, you can find pictures and statements that makes a house a home. There is food that allows individuals to grow at their own pace. The nondiscrimination language is the food for that growth. The nondiscrimination language addresses the growth and safety of marginalized communities in Prescott. Nondiscrimination language represents a culture we desire in our community. It is not meant to stop discrimination, but by having this language in writing, it helps should there be an incident of discrimination in the future. In the, then the city has the language that points to the culture we aspire to create. This is forward-thinking. Everybody equals all, such as in all men are created equal. Everybody's hometown, this is what everybody's hometown should look like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Greg Murray.
Hi, my name is Greg Murray, and I live at-
Could you bring the mic up a little more, please?
Oh, sorry.
Don't break it, though.
I already did. Is that better? My name is Greg Murray, and I live at 5164 Porter Creek Drive in, in Prescott. I'd like to thank the city staff and the General Plan Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission for taking such care with the general plan. I think it's a really nice document. And, but especially for accepting public input to make it as useful as possible over the next 10 years. I am concerned, however, that some of the comments made in public meetings amount to misinformation intended to undermine the scientific basis for parts of the general plan. Mostly those concern the reality of climate change and its consequences for us and for others into the future. Today, I'd like to briefly address just three claims made by a citizen over the last month or so at a review, the general plan review committee and Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. First, it was claimed that, and I'm quoting here, every 10 years, we've been told that disastrous events are just around the corner, that we need immediate action, and that New York and California are going to be underwater. And then that, quote, "For six decades, we've been fed a regular diet of climate change predictions that never happened." But the predictions of coastal flooding are based on topography and measured rates of sea level rise all over the world. In New York City, sea level has risen by about 12 inches since 1900, and because the rate of sea level rise is itself increasing, the level is projected to increase by as much as 5.4 feet more by 2100, or even more, depending on the climate, the, the rate at which we reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Again, those trends have been measured carefully for about 140 years now, and the models projecting into the future are in good agreement with the actual observations. The effects of sea level rise might not be readily apparent here in Prescott, Arizona, but I can assure you that my relatives who lost their home in Fort Myers, Florida, consider them both profound and catastrophic. The same citizen went on to claim that sea level had not changed since 1620 because Plymouth Rock was at the same water level now as when the pilgrims landed. No doubt, this probably came from social media viral posts that have been circulating around for some time now, but it has been debunked again and again. Plymouth Rock has been split, put back together, and moved several times since 1774. That's the historical record. And yes, it is underwater at high tide. Finally, the commenter denied the reality of climate change by pointing out that the maximum temperature recorded in 1923 were nearly the same here in Prescott, 103 versus 104 degrees Fahrenheit. Excuse me. But that's just cherry picking of the worst kind. One could as easily point out that in 1913, the temperature never reached 100 degrees even once. I looked into the data myself to see that. So, the publicly available records show that the average temperature in Prescott has increased by over 3 degrees Fahrenheit since 1900, and we're projected to have up to 50 days per year over 100 degrees by 2100, depending on how quickly we reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Because this is such an important issue, I've addressed those bogus claims about climate change in more detail in writing with proper references to the data sources and, and analysis techniques. And I'm happy to share it with anybody who has an interest. I've, I've got paper copies here, and, and if anybody would like one, please, please tell me, and I'll give it to you. But thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Jacob?
Next speaker is Jim Helbling.
Yeah, I'm Jim Helbling. I live at 2411 Alberta Way in Prescott. I'm here representing the Martin Luther King Peace and Justice Committee. As committee lead, I felt the need to respond to comments that were made at the last Planning and Zoning Meeting regarding the nondiscrimination statement in the general plan. Since one of those comments was focused on the legal ramifications of including the statement in the plan, Robert Shigog and I met with city attorney Joe Young yesterday to get his opinion on potential city liability. Mr. Young assured us that including the statement does not leave the city open to liability claims. The statement simply tells us readers that Prescott values people of varying backgrounds and wants to include them in city planning. Another comment made at the last meeting stated that the plan is a land use document, and as such, it is not the place for woke statements such as the one proposed by our committee. But if land use is the primary purpose of the plan, shouldn't the use of that land be open to all residents of Prescott without the threat of discrimination or harassment? There are people in the city who currently do not feel that is the case. So, our statement reassures them that the city does, does value them and does not condone acts of discrimination or harassment toward them. And if there's any question that the underrepresented residents experienced discrimination or harassment, one only needs to read the emailed comments sent in during the public comment period relative to the nondiscrimination in the plan, statement in the plan. I counted 14 separate incidents of discrimination and racial, or overt racial racism documented in those comments, including one comment that listed four separate incidents that occurred during the last half of last year. I have them here if you would like to read them. Removing the nondiscrimination statement would imply that you think these comments are irrelevant. Please keep the nondiscrimination statement in the plan to give these people hope that Prescott does aspire to be everybody's hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Patrick Grady.
Good morning. I'm Patrick-
I'm Patrick Grady. I reside at 943 West Rosser Street. I too want to applaud the work of staff on this general plan, as well as the work of the General Plan Review Committee. But as one of the previous speakers pointed out, there have been some other concerns raised in previous public comments regarding the purpose of the general plan and seeming to feel that the general plan, and I quote, is how to manage land to generate money and support development, infrastructure, and growth. That really is not an accurate description of what general plans are intended by law to do. In fact, they incorporate numerous elements to factor into the city's plan for the future, which I think city staff and the General Plan Review Committee have done so well. It's simply a lot more than just development and growth. There's no mention of money. These plans by law are to contain community goals and policies on more than land use, including, to name a few, environmental planning, open space, the natural environment, neighborhood reservation, transportation, sustainability, and resiliency, one of the chapters in our proposed general plan. In 2015, our general plan for Prescott also included economic development and community quality of life. There was no objection at that time. General plans are intended by state legislature to give communities the responsibility to guide their own development in ways to provide for the best sustainable future for our citizens. Very few speakers have even suggested that they're prepared to vote against the general plan if some of the components that they disagree with are not included, even if they also laud other portions of this draft general plan. Let's not go there. That is very divisive. Rather, let's work together for the long-term interests of our community, recognizing that there has been substantial, and actually, I think outstanding, citizen engagement in the process today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ralph Hess.
I don't have any further comments.
Next speaker.
Ralph, the attorney, has no further comment? Okay. Jacob.
Michelle Hamer.
Hello, and thank you. My name's Michelle Hamer, and I live at 801 Downer Trail in Prescott. You know, and after speaking at the last meeting, several people approached me and said that the only enforceable part of this plan is land use. Really? You've worked two years on it, into this plan, and it's going to be on the ballot, probably, in August for the residents to vote on, yet most of it is not enforceable. This plan includes the dark sky regulations that will impact homeowners, a Vision Zero plan that prioritizes prioritizes equity for cars, cyclists, and pedestrians, the Tree City designation that could impose new restrictions on property owners, and costly climate initiatives that offer no real benefits to residents. And I'd like to address a comment. I do believe in climate change. When I was in high school, I was taught that there was five ice ages, and it was only 20,000 years ago that Manhattan was under a mild, thick piece of ice. I do, and I'm really glad it changed because otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So these initiatives would cost taxpayers money for marketing titles while turning our city into what I think is a kind of giant HOA. And according to Tammy at this meeting, and last, is a lot of these initiatives are already underway and in motion before any voting has gone to them. This is why I'm adamant about removing these unenforceable initiatives in a land uses document with its vague language. Last September, my water was shut off. And a man came up, not from the city, and put a tag on my door telling me that a smart meter had just been put on my house, and and my water usage could now be monitored 24/7. Well, when APS installed the smart meter on my home, I told them to remove it, and they did. But when I called the city Prescott Water Department, they told me they could come and remove it, but they'd shut off my water. They also informed me that this was approved and voted on in the 2015 Land Usage General Plan, and I should have showed my objections then. But just like now, 99% of the residents I talk to don't even know what's in the general plan. But when they watch their watch-turming city turn into California, they'll start calling the city council, only to be told the city voted on it. And speaking of California, maybe a fire-wise designation would be more appropriate, seeing the residents' homeowners insurance is now being doubled or canceled because of the increase of our fire rating. That's why I joined the team and helped got 478 passed. So just to remind you, Prescott is over $150 million in debt and climbing, and we're losing $2 million a dollar a year in rental taxes, yet we're spending money our money on symbolic titles that most residents don't really care about. In conclusion, this general plan is really seems like an omnibus bill bundling together unrelated and controversial initiatives. The general plan should only include enforceable items, and everything else should be put to the voters separately. And I've been saying that with every comments that I've been making. And my comments on using land to create revenue, that's just good business sense. And so that's why I've been advocating it when I've come and talked before you before. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you consider my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob?
Next speaker is Ann Breckwald.
I'm Ann Breckwald. I live in Deepwell Ranch. We moved there in August from Williamson Valley. I've been in the area 20 years, been very active. I did speak at the last meeting, and mine was the concern about the legality of the in the introduction on what I call human behavior. So to to clear up my opinion on that, certainly, I have, being a woman, and being a professional woman, and a pretty determined one, and independent, given my age, I've had lots of years of discrimination and harassment, and some of it pretty significant, some of it even physical. And it hasn't, it has improved greatly over the years. And except two years ago, I was told I couldn't walk in my neighbor's driveway because we had a flagpole with a flag, and that meant we were pretty bad people. So it is a part of human nature. It is a very despicable part of human nature. And I think there are many avenues, including federal, local laws, that are punishment if you get too carried away in it. There is a system we've developed. I don't think it's part of a plan that is supposed to be for land usage. And part of my rebellion against it is not because I've never been discriminated against, and I don't think it exists. I do believe it exists, and I know it. But I think there are a lot of other avenues that could be quite more productive to deal with it in terms of establishing social ways to attack that problem. So I and I personally fear that we could end up with some organization within the city government that would be monitoring human behavior, and there could be fines if you're doing this or that, or you could suffer some other consequences. And that, I don't think, is the proper place for it. So that's just my output on that. The other part I'm really uncomfortable with is when, again, it's monitoring behavior that we have when we live in a community, and that is, I think, there's a great divide over climate change. There are people who really believe that we have a serious impact and that we can change that impact. The other side believes that that is nonsense, and that human beings cannot change Mother Nature or the enormity of climate, what we call climate change. I know that that's a disagreement. It's a very dividing one. And again, I don't think it's part of this purpose of a city plan, which is, what are we going to do with the community we've got in terms of housing, transportation, the roadways, and managing the traffic flows, getting transportation in? Those are all very large and expensive things that have to be done in their infrastructure. I think on the on the other ends, where the one of the things we don't want to do is antagonize the divide already in our in our society on climate change. And I know it's a big divide. I think that we can attack, again, that from other areas, but not out of this city plan that has an important purpose that's critical to the community. So that's that's my feeling on that. I fear that when you put things that are terribly dividing into a physical plan, you open a Pandora's Pandora's box, and it can be used as an excuse to have one side attack the other side and diminish the efficiency of a city plan planning infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob?
Next speaker is Jenna James.
Good morning, Jenna James. I live at 1755 Commonwealth Street in Prescott. My comments are actually about the anti-discrimination paragraph in the introduction. Prior to your last meeting on January 9th, I took a look at the comments that were received by the planning department that were attached to the packet for that meeting. Honestly, based on public discourse and things I had seen reported in the paper, I thought that the comments were going to lean very much a certain way. And reading through the 17 pages of comments that the planning department received, I was actually very surprised. I expected page after page of comments showing support for removing that provision, but in fact, seven, seven total comments out of the hundreds that were received suggested that it should be revised or removed. Over 100 suggested that that provision or that paragraph is important to the members of our community. And I think that we really need to maybe not make a mountain out of a molehill and just let people show that they have a dedication towards common decency, and there's nothing wrong with having it be an aspirational statement in our general plan, that that is the type of community we wish to have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob?
Next speaker is Linda Nichols.
My name is Linda Nichols. I live at 2287 Sequoia Drive in Prescott. I have been in Prescott for 14 years, but I've been a very active citizen, and I love this city. I wanted to thank the committees and the and the Planning and Zoning Committee and the staff for all the work they've put into this. In my career, I was in high tech, and we did a lot of that kind of work, and I know what goes into it. It's something that you almost learn to have as your baby. You want it to stay the same. But I ask that this group will look at changes because that's what we're here for. This is a public, a public place to give our comments, and I do see a little bit of heels dug in, and I would like to just remind us that that's what we're here to do. I want to also thank, and Tammy brought this up, that you guys did look at the comments I made last time about fire and police being so outdated. 10, 15, 20 years outdated in this plan that's going to be here for 10 years. So I thank you for looking at that and for bringing in Chief Deray to make some significant changes. I was the co-chair of 478, and it did pass, and I really think it has to be in there because it made a lot of difference. The other thing I want to say is just looking at the introduction page, which many have mentioned here today, it says on one paragraph that it's a land use document, and then the paragraph just below there talks about DEI and woke discrimination. I respect Robert, I think it's Matt and the other gentleman, with what they believe in. I'm not opposed to what they believe in necessarily, but this is a land use document, and like some of the other people have said, it's just riddled with DEI and woke. I've even heard that 50 pages could be removed if you remove that information. Tell me in what world land use is DEI and woke information? It does not belong in this document. And and that's just my take on it. It's not that I'm against it. It's not that I don't think it's important. Some people even say it might cause division. I would just like to see this be a land use document. I work at the chamber one day a week as a volunteer. I've been there nine years, and I know that people look at these things coming into our city, and that is a very one-way leaning concept, and it gives people a certain impression. I don't know that we want to give people a certain impression of our city that isn't more comprehensive. So that's how I think it should, why it should be coming out. It takes up an enormous amount of space in the document. Now, when we bring this up to people, they go, oh, it's not legally binding. It doesn't matter. Well, that's how people get their foot in the door, and that's how people start making it so. And if it's not legally binding, why is it in there? You know, what does it need to be in there for? It isn't related to land use, so it takes up a lot of space. I also think taking out these pages would cut costs if you print this for the public by quite a bit. It would make the reading easier and more relevant, and it's it wouldn't send this one-sided cultural message. And I just think I wouldn't want the other side having their message in there as well. You know, it just doesn't belong there. So I think this is still a work in progress, and I think that if people would really look at this practically, and what it's going to be used for, and what it's intended for, they would see that this is not the place for those things. I don't disagree with them. I'm not trying to make that point. I'm just saying they don't belong in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Joanne Ellers.
Hello, I'm Joanne Ellers, representing Save the Dells today. I'm at 2911 Granite Gardens Drive in Prescott. And I wanted to address some of the wording in the version 14 of the general plan. I want to thank Tammy for working with me on some of the inconsistencies I found in the labeling of, depending on where you look, Granite Dells Regional Park and Preserve, Glassford Dells Preserve, other iterations of those names of the particular recreational areas and open spacelands that needed some help. And so I talked to Tammy out outside, I say, of meetings, and I heard from her that she and staff have come up with some very creative solutions for that wording, because it is tricky. The the regional park is in flux. Prescott Valley people are still determining what how their their partnership in that is going to be designated or named. And so I wanted just to thank them for coming up with something that sounds really reasonable. And also to thank the Tammy and staff and others for working with us on the the Wildlife Corridor wording. We really wanted to support, including those, the language that brought wildlife connectivity into the general plan in a stronger way. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Last speaker is Councilman Ted Gamboge.
If I may, my talk is a little bit more directed to the audience, so I'm going to turn around and and look at them. And you know, the late, great, you saw a basketball coach, John Wooden, once said, if you fail to plan, you're playing to fail. I met John Wooden. He's just a just a tremendous man. If Ted Gamboge were to add on to that, it would be if you fail to to execute, you've just wasted a plan. Now, I think there's some reality in an attempt to bring the temperature down on this general plan. First of all, it is not legally binding. Secondly, before I was on council, I was the chair of the general plan before they got a better chair in Terry Sappio, and I've been on the Planning Commission with Tom Riley and Don Michaelman. I can't think of an element in the 2015 general plan that we implemented, but I can cite two examples of elements in the 2015 general plan that came before the Planning Commission and were approved that didn't get implemented by council. So don't spend so much time getting worked up with the elements of the general plan. Find those elements in the general plan that you support, then work to have them implemented within the city. To quote Robert, "It is everybody's hometown." And I beg you to come together as a community to find ways that you can support the plan, and then find elements within the plan that you will champion and get executed. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ted.
And that was our last speaker.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion concerning item C? This is GPA 22, day 001. If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move and recommend approval of draft 2025 general plan with the updates discussed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Jacob?
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approve.
Chair Michaelman?
Approve.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I think we all commend staff, particularly Tammy, the General Plan Committee, for all the hard work they've done. And it's really, it's been really remarkable process.
Having been on the General Plan Committee for the, what, three years that we did this, it was an effort, and there was a lot of good discussion. And I think the plan that was put forth was a good plan on there. So, next item then is LDC 24-003, Proposed Amendment to the Land Development Code for State Statute Compliance Regarding Application Completeness.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director for the City of Prescott. And this is a little bit of a more boring item, so I can imagine people will be clearing out. State Legislature. Thank you all for being here, by the way.
Chelsea, I think the reason they're leaving, they know the bar's not going to be open.
That's correct. It is, after all, only 10:48 in the morning. So this item is coming before-
Think of all the time we've already wasted.
I apologize. So this item is coming before you because the legislative session last year imposed some requirements of local municipalities to update certain sections of the code, their municipal zoning code, in addition to a lot of other deadlines that they put on us throughout the year. So what, for the public that's still here, the acronyms on this title slide, Proposed Land Development Code Update Relative to Application Completeness. So the changes required by the statute, and again, this is in the full text of the, both the statute language as well as our markup of our current code is in your packets. But in a nutshell, this, the changes are three things. That the municipality needs to determine initial completeness within 30 days and re-submital completeness within 15 days. Also, that we communicate comprehensive list of deficiencies to applicants, and then denial of applications when re-submittals are incomplete. And then finally, determining the approval or denial of the applications within 180 days. So those are the main requirements of the statute in a nutshell. And as you can see in the red lines, the strike-throughs and the additions, we were largely meeting that. So the text of the Land Development Code was updated to just capture the items that maybe weren't clear and match the statutory language more closely. We also included a statutory citation in case there's any questions by applicants to refer them back to what the statute actually says. So with that, I'm open for questions, but the recommendation is to move and recommend approval of this amendment to the Land Development Code.
Any questions for staff?
Tom Davis, just a clarification, Chelsea.
Yes, sir.
The city has 15 days to determine whether or not the application is complete. If the submittal is incomplete, the application is denied. Obviously, within that 15 days, there's a cure, correct? I mean-
Right.
Right. It doesn't say that here, but I mean, it's, just to clarify-
Yes, so, I mean, I would, I would refer back to the communication back to the applicant. So our team is actually really good. Jake processes all of our zoning applications, and he usually gets to it within like three to five days, and that's being generous. He's usually Johnny-on-the-spot about it. But what we do is, once we recognize the deficiency, we send them an email, and we say, "Look, we can't process your application until we get this necessary information back from you. It's not complete." So if, if we send that response saying, "Hey, your application is incomplete," it's really in, the ball is in their court at that point, and I would say they have 15 days per statute to get back to us, or we're going to deem it incomplete based on the text.
Okay, that's the way I understand it. Thank you.
Yes.
Is that 15 days from when you send the email or from when they first submitted it?
I would say it's 15 days from when the incomplete application information is sent into us. And again, this is, this is email correspondence. Obviously, we're not going to tell them, "Your application is denied because, because you didn't call us back right away." I mean, we work with people. This is just being in conformance with the statutory language.
Okay.
And if someone calls us on day 16 and says, "Hey, I was out of town," or "I've had technology trouble," we're going to work with people.
Other questions for staff? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Riley, move to recommend approval of amendment to the Land Development Code, Sections 9.1.5 as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Susan Graham, all second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, Jacob?
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approve.
Chair Michaelman?
Approve. Any updates?
If not, I want to thank the audience that is still here for attending. We always want to have input from the public. We may not always agree, but we want to have that input on that. So again, thank you for attending. Meeting is adjourned.